Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting for June 18th. We have just a couple of typical announcements. Please silence any cell phones you may have on. And if you wish to address the board during public comment, please make sure you've signed in at the back table entrance. For online attendees who would like to comment, please announce yourselves during introductions and indicate that you wish to provide comments. If you're presenting to the board today, the microphones on the tables are on when the little light up top shows red. Yes, as demonstrated by John. And you need to position that mic fairly close to yourself and speak directly into it for the best audio quality. And this is the audio that is streamed to folks that are not in the room, as well as to provide sound for all of us. So with that, we will do a round of introductions. I'm Zan Ojero. This is your support chair.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Vance Carney, County Counsel.
Rachel McInney, County Administrator.
And then in the room, we'll start with John Phillips.
John Phillips, the fourth.
Thank you.
Eliza Tuttle. Kirsten Miller.
Lacey Willow, Community Health Senator.
Zaya Willow.
Lily Mander.
Christopher Jacobs, Co-Founder of the County.
Director of Public Information, Dan County.
Matt Weller, also Department Director.
I'm going to make peace administrative specialist.
Angela Wang.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Maura Kwiatkowski, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Thank you. And I omitted to mention that Commissioner Malone is not here today because he's out on vacation this week. So we have a two-member board this week. Okay, moving onward. For the first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll consider the agenda approved and move on to our proclamation for Juneteenth. But first, a bit of a bio. John Phillips, the fourth, was born and raised in Portland and has lived on the West Coast all his life. With his upbringing centered around community, reinvesting in community and interacting with people from all walks of life. His second home is the Bay Area, where his family consists of a multitude of community leaders and activists, including a second cousin who was a Minister of Education for the Black Panther Party in Oakland, California. After being a member of the Lynn Benton NAACP chapter for one and a half years, John was elected the second vice president in January 2023. He's immersed himself in the work and really leaned in on the expertise of those around him, not only within NAACP, but also with ally entities. His work also centers around community, as he's a group life coordinator at Jackie Winter's Transition Program at Oak Creek. His work centers around assisting youth continue their treatment and relapse prevention, as well as building on work experience, life skills, and the forward progress of their overall personal development. Welcome, and thank you for reading the Juneteenth proclamation.
Thank you, Zan. Appreciate it. In the matter of proclaiming June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth in Benton County, Juneteenth commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African Americans in the United States, celebrating freedom and marking an essential milestone in our nation's history. Juneteenth serves as a reminder of the resilience, courage, and perseverance of generations of African Americans who fought for freedom, equality, and justice. Juneteenth provides an opportunity for reflection, education, and community engagement that fosters understanding and appreciation of African American heritage, culture, and contributions. Benton County recognizes the importance of acknowledging and honoring the significance of our Juneteenth in our shared history in promoting inclusivity, diversity, and equity within our community. Benton County, excuse me, Benton County is committed to promoting racially equity, justice, and reconciliation, striving for a future where all individuals are treated with dignity, respect, and fairness. Therefore, be it proclaimed that Juneteenth, on the 19th day of June 2024, is recognized as a day of remembrance, reflection, and celebration in Benton County. All community members are encouraged to commemorate Juneteenth by participating in educational events, community gatherings, and acts of service that promote unity, understanding, and social justice.
Thank you. And given that last note, would you like to put in a pitch for the Juneteenth celebration tomorrow?
Yes, I would. So we, the NAACP has our Juneteenth celebration tomorrow, June 19th. It's going to be in Albany at LBCC from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. or, for military time people out there, 1500 to 1900. So again, tomorrow, Juneteenth, 3 to 7, or 15 to 19 at LBCC. I hope to see people there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I move to proclaim June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth in Benton County, Proclamation Number P 2024-013.
Second, all in favor signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. See you tomorrow. Okay, moving onward, we have no comments from the public. So we will move into our work session, and the first item of business is our public health update with April Holland.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you today. So I have a brief oral update. Shouldn't take too long to go through a couple of things. Do you want to just share an overarching COVID-19 awareness update and where we are in our communities? We know there's been some transmission of respiratory viruses recently, which likely includes some COVID in there. And you've likely heard in national news that in many places, COVID infections have increased or do increase over summer months. While there is continued activity and increases across states that share COVID data, including Oregon, overall hospitalizations do remain low at this time according to recent CDC data. Thanks to immunity conferred by vaccination and also infection, this year so far has been the lowest rate of spring hospitalizations since the pandemic began. That said, I do want to just bring your awareness that the start of June brought a very recent jump in hospitalizations from 103 people on June 1st to 138 COVID-positive patients in Oregon hospital beds on June 11th. So when we see that kind of increase, it's important to look to a few sources of data that may help us determine where we might be going and where we are. As you know, test positivity is one way that we gauge community transmission. Right now, test positivity is around 5%, which is a little bump from the 4% that we saw across April, but still not to that 10% mark where we would, that would suggest widespread community transmission. Testing and positivity rate is a harder gauge of transmission when fewer people are being tested. So it can't be used alone to really inform us. Wastewater Surveillance that happens across Oregon is another way to view potential transmission activity. And right now, about a quarter of community surveillance sites are experiencing increases, and about 10% overall are experiencing sustained increases, indicating that we're likely to see increased transmission over the next few weeks. Most of those are up in the northwest corner of the state. The rest of the community sites are at a plateau level, so neither increasing nor decreasing. So what does all that mean? Well, COVID, while not currently at high levels, it's out there and it continues to shift and cause infections, including some severe ones. It's a good idea to follow good respiratory hygiene practices and enjoy the outdoors while we can. You know, it's going to be cold and rainy again before we know it. And stay home when sick. We are likely to see a fall 2024 COVID vaccine that's tailored more closely to circulating variants such as JN1, which you may have heard about, and its offshoots. This will be offered to prevent widespread severe infections and a seasonal surge in hospital hospitalizations, which can affect hospital capacities. So that's it for COVID-19. The last time I provided a public health update, I mentioned pertussis and just want to share that it does continue to circulate at above normal levels. However, the other most recent news item in infectious disease is measles, unfortunately. We've evaded measles in Oregon so far for some time now, and just over the last weekend and then yesterday, we now have three cases confirmed across the state, and there are investigations ongoing to determine exposure sites of individuals. So over the last weekend, two folks from the same household in Clackamas County were confirmed to have measles. And just last night, a third case in Marion County was determined. The early exposure notifications were to a couple of medical facilities in OHSU up in the Portland area, one of which is considered lower risk because there were procedures in place, including masking and other precautions, and the other a little more concerning. So measles is one of the most infectious diseases out there. Before we had this pandemic, it was the thing that really got infectious disease professionals concerned. And it still is very concerning. Before, we had a vaccine for measles, about 48,000 people were hospitalized every year in the U.S. and about 400 to 500 people died. So most people across Oregon don't have anything to be concerned about because most people have received vaccinations. What we really don't want to see is measles landing in one of those pockets of really low vaccination, where it would just spread like wildfire and could cause some pretty severe consequences potentially for those infected folks. So while Benton County, you know, isn't on any exposure list at this time, our teams are on alert and are ready to help if this does become a big outbreak. And, you know, just want to recap that anyone born in 1957 or later who hasn't had a measles vaccine can get one. And that immunity conferred will protect from the severe possible implications of an infection. So just an update there of what we might, our CD teams might be up to. Hopefully not, but early information suggests that we might have multiple exposures that are being investigated right now. Any questions?
No, not from me, although I think I can say that I'm glad that school is getting out for the summer because that eliminates one of those major vectors. And hopefully, any summer activities will be mostly outdoor, as you suggested.
Good timing on the school front, for sure.
Okay, any other questions for April on public health?
No, but just to share that, I just got my, one of my daughters all up to date on her vaccines. And as much as she hates them, this is exactly why we do it.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, we have Eliza Tuttle and Kirsten Miller presenting on the South Corvallis Food Hub Needs Assessment Report. And I will note also that Christopher Jacobs from our Economic Development Office is in the audience.
Okay, we need you. Perfect. Thank you. So first, thank you, councilors and staff, for your time. My name is Eliza Tuttle. I'm the Principal of A-Tuttle Consult. I'm also a research associate at Portland State University, a volunteer with the Corvallis Sustainability Coalition's Food Action Team and with Ten Rivers Food Web. I grew up and live on a small hobby farm in Lewisburg, and this research was conducted in collaboration with Kirsten Miller, Mark Lutera, Kelsey Johnson, Rebecca Weinstein, over 15 volunteers, and input and guidance from many, many others. Perfect. Just a brief timeline of this project. The community has been organizing for about 25 years in South Corvallis about food accessibility. This specific project was funded through an ARPA grant awarded to Benton County from the state of Oregon to identify gaps in local food and beverage supply systems and create a food hub in South Corvallis by December 31st, 2024. Benton County received funds in December 21 for this project. In November 2023, the Corvallis-Benton County Economic Development Office, the EDO, released a request for proposals to select a consultant to complete a systems assessment to identify gaps in the local food and beverage supply systems and create scenarios for a food hub in South Corvallis. As the selected consultant from that RFP process, we conducted research with the community and delivered a system assessment to the city and the public on May 6th, 2024. That report is available at southcorvallisfoodhub.org and on yescorvallis.org. Hold there for a second. Okay. The EDO has published a grant application for food hub operators. That application is currently open, and the consultant team continues to support development of potential applicants, although we are not participating in applicant process, in the selection process, excuse me. Go back one slide. That's all right. Perfect. Thank you. Our contract scope was to determine the feasibility of a South Corvallis food hub, develop an inventory of equipment and infrastructure, create three potential food hub scenarios, and identify potential operators. We have completed each of these aspects, and we continue to support potential food hub operators. Next slide. So what is a food hub? A food hub is defined by the U.S. Department of Agriculture as "a business or organization that actively manages aggregation, distribution, marketing, and marketing of source-identified food products primarily from local and regional producers to strengthen their ability to satisfy wholesale, retail, and institutional demand." So in more simple terms, it means it's an aggregation-distribution type scenario where source-identified products, meaning, you know, for example, if you go to a restaurant and you order roasted carrots, there's the name of the farm on the menu, and that farm is accurate to where those carrots were grown. Next slide. Currently, there are 12 food hubs in Oregon and over 200 nationwide, with some focusing on business incubation, some on connecting institutional purchasers, like schools and hospitals, to locally sourced food, and others focusing on connecting individual consumers to local food. So food hubs can take on a wide variety of forms and functions, but in general, they're to bolster local food economy. For this contract, to study the feasibility of a future food hub in South Corvallis, we were asked to create three scenarios: a virtual option, a large-scale industrial option, and a small-scale option. To understand the viability of these scenarios, we conducted extensive research with the community. That research included over 50 structured interviews with local business owners, prospective business owners, farmers market staff and vendors, social service leaders and volunteers, and many others. We also conducted a community survey that received over 780 responses. And those are included responses, so we got a lot more, but we only counted the ones that were directly relevant to our area. We also cataloged available equipment and facilities, and we reviewed local and national food hub studies. We visited five nearby food hubs and met with their leadership and staff. And I'll share the results of these data collection efforts now. The food, the first question we asked community survey respondents was if this project is needed and if they would benefit from a food hub in South Corvallis. As you can see, the answer was a resounding yes, with 96% responding it would benefit them at least a little, and rising to 98% for those living in South Corvallis. When shopping for groceries, 61% of respondents' top priority was locally sourced foods, mostly followed by affordability at 55% of respondents. When eating at restaurants and food carts, respondents' top priority by far and away is flavor, the deliciousness of the food when you go out to eat. Affordability was the next most common top priority endorsed by 34% of respondents, and locally sourced foods was endorsed as a top priority by 31% of respondents. The top priorities when purchasing groceries and when eating at restaurants were similar, but affordability of groceries was more important than affordability of eating at restaurants. Nice. Okay. The data tells us consumers support a variety of food hub scenarios from another farmer's market in South Corvallis, a food cart pod, to increasing local food at existing businesses. And like I said before, food hubs could take a variety of forms. The business community also said that they want to source more local foods, but currently experience barriers to doing this, and that a local food aggregator would help them respond to consumer demand to source more local food. Social service agencies said their main priority was food access and food affordability. We asked current and aspiring business owners why they purchase local food. The majority of respondents, 68 of the 75, or 91%, said that they purchased local food because it contributes to the local economy. And 65 of the 75 respondents are 87%, but because of their shared priority with consumers to create high-quality and delicious food. We asked current and aspiring farmers and food producers what supports they would use to shift to selling more local food. And they said, "marketing, a local food directory, delivery, and a local food aggregator." And just a side note here, Ten Rivers Food Web just released their local food directory, so that need is met. Finally, current and future business owners described the gaps in the food system that they experience as barriers to starting or growing their business. To address these gaps, they told us that they are interested in a food hub that would provide a commercial kitchen, aggregation and distribution services, and cold storage space. Because of the results of their research, we shifted our three scenarios to build out options supported by the community. And those three options are a commercial kitchen, a food cart pod, and a warehouse that provides cold storage, distribution, and aggregation, and delivery. Next slide. And we assessed each scenario using the assessment criteria provided by the EDO. To conduct the scenario assessments, we returned to the community by touring potential and existing sites, consulting with potential tenants, owners, users, and customers. I'm going to go through the following slides really quickly, but I will direct you to your packets and to the report that's published for the numbers for even more detail. And you can always ask questions as well. All right, here we go. The first scenario we assessed was a commercial kitchen. We determined it could have a variety of components, including space rental of a licensed facility, small business incubator support, and co-packing. Commercial kitchen is in high demand by small businesses in our community, and it would fill a gap that currently exists for them to access new markets. We did some fiscal modeling using the available Benton County Fairgrounds commercial kitchen space and found, next slide, "with the support of these ARPA funds and a willing operator, a commercial" next slide, "with the support of these ARPA funds and a willing operator, a commercial kitchen could be fiscally viable in the next three years." Next slide. The second scenario we explored was a food cart pod. We found it could have a variety of components, including a food cart pad rental space. It could provide business incubator support, and of course, it would provide an additional location for people in South Corvallis to access food. The commercial kitchen and the food cart pod both were championed by minority businesses as a way to access markets that are currently not as accessible to them. The community survey respondents told us they want a food cart pod in South Corvallis, and aspiring business owners told us it would help them access the market. Again, we did some fiscal modeling in consultation with existing food cart pod owners. Nice. And found a food cart pod may be fiscally viable, especially with the support of these ARPA funds. One more. Okay. The third and final scenario we assessed was a warehouse scenario. This permutation of a food hub could offer cold storage space, aggregation and distribution of local food, delivery of local food, collaborative marketing opportunities, and opportunities for consumers to access local food. Two of the local food businesses' top needs could be met by this scenario. It could increase institutional local food purchasing, think local carrots in schools, and it could support the over 25 local small farms that want to grow in the next five years. We modeled the finances using an available warehouse space in South Corvallis and found using ARPA funds, the scenario could also be fiscally viable in the next three years. One more. So to conclude with a quick snapshot of these three scenarios side by side using the assessment criteria, we can see that there are at least three scenarios that could address the gaps identified in our local food system, and they could be fiscally viable in the next three years. The final thought I'll leave you with is that through this process, we heard some overarching themes that relate to all directions the EDO decides to take the food hub. The community told us they want renewed focus on equity, collaboration, and opportunities for historically disadvantaged groups, not just to inform, but to own and shape programs that affect them. The next step in this project is for the community to respond to the grant opportunity opened by the EDO, and for the EDO to select food hub operators. Final slide. Great. So the future of South Corvallis could be delicious. Sign up for updates if you want using this QR code from the consulting team, and thank you all very much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. Amanda.
Thank you for all this very detailed information. Much appreciated. I guess what I'm most interested in is that fiscal viability piece, you know, the feasibility of actually making it in the long run. So I'm not sure I have any specific questions there, but thank you for the information.
Yes, thank you.
And I would like to just highlight the fact that a food hub is a challenging beast because the definition is an eyes of the beholder and the needs of the business, and it's fairly clear to me that there's a bimodal interest. There's one set of interests coming from small farms, growers, who really need that aggregation function in order to be able to sustainably supply institutional buyers or even one of our premier restaurants locally. Whereas for small food businesses that are providing retail food, the needs are quite different, either the commercial kitchen and the food pot approach. So I think that it's going to be very interesting to see what suite of proposals we draw because that, we will see just how wide and deep each of those needs are. But I think we're gonna have some hard choices to make, and that's something that I think the community needs to be aware of. And I'm hoping that, because it's kind of chicken and egg, that we can do it all, but we have to start somewhere and build a foundation and build from there. And so we have to choose wisely in order to be able to launch the next phase. So it's really exciting work, but I sure wish we'd been able to start it earlier. So yeah, thank you. I don't have any specific questions either. I've been tracking the project pretty carefully all the way along. Any questions from county administrator? No? Okay. Sorry, we're missing Commissioner Malone today. But yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you also for the county's support and for administering these funds. It's, I can tell the community is very excited. As you can tell, by that 98% of folks who are hoping this would benefit them. So, thank you.
Yes, and again, as a resident of South Corvallis, I can say I've been very engaged in this process over the years. I know that folks in my neighborhood are definitely very interested. So, thank you. Next up, we have a video presentation from Benton County Elections focused on election integrity. And the video will be presented by James Morales from Records and Elections, as well as Darla, and I'm blanking on your last name. Who, thank you, Darla Rush, and Corey Grogan, our Public Information Officer. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to be here to present this. We're actually really excited about this. And at the direction of our county administrator, Rachel, the Elections Department has coordinated with our Public Information Office to work on this education and transparency project that we think is really important. Because as you know, there's an election coming up in November, and it's extremely important for folks to get out and vote. And we're really proud of the work that the Elections Department does, so we just want to educate and let folks know that we're being transparent, and also that there's a lot of integrity behind this process. And so we made this video, and we'll show the video, and then Darla and James will say a few quick words. But really, why did we do this? We do it to educate the voters. We do it to increase voter participation. This is another way that we can conduct outreach to ensure everybody knows that it's time to get out and vote, and to register to vote, to ensure transparency. This is going to continue to be a big deal for us, finding different ways that we can show that we're being transparent, and this is one of those ways. This will address common questions, and it will show that there's a very thoughtful process that has a lot of integrity and a lot of work that goes into ensuring that every vote counts and to make sure that it's counted the right way, and also that it's accessible, so that anybody who wants to vote can vote, you know, whether they're overseas or whatever, you know, might be preventing them from making it easy to vote, and combating misinformation. Because, you know, we have seen reports that folks don't understand the process and might worry about whether or not their vote's being counted accurately. And so we just want to show that there is a lot that goes into that and that the votes will be counted accurately. So that's really all I have to say about it, and we can go ahead and play the video.
Corey, how long is the video for the folks?
Video is approximately five minutes long. It's a little bit longer than some of the videos that we do, but we wanted to show the whole process. Note about this video while we're getting it queued up is that it also has closed captions. And so that's one way that we ensure that we're making it more accessible.
Registered, can register up to 21 days before the election. And qualified voters who have been inactivated, usually because the voter did not respond to a notice mailed to them, can still receive a ballot by updating and reactivating their registration at the elections office up to 8:00 PM on election day. Whether through mail, online, or in-person delivery, every voter's information is carefully updated to maintain accuracy. Voters can mail in or drop off ballots at designated locations that ensure accessibility and convenience. Official ballot drop boxes are dispersed throughout Benton County. Each ballot box is securely locked and closely monitored. Once the ballot collection process has begun, teams of two representing different party affiliations handle the ballots before arrival at the elections office, ensuring fairness and integrity from the outset. Security is paramount at every stage. Ballots are tracked with log sheets and transported in specially designated bins, while security cameras monitor every step of the process, ensuring the integrity of the election. Participating campaigns assign observers to monitor the processes election officials are following to ensure the election workers are implementing the secure, fair, and transparent election procedures adopted by the county and in compliance with state law. Automated systems play a crucial role in the verification process, assigning unique IDs to each ballot for tracking purposes. Redundancies are in place to cross-verify ballot counts at each step in the process at both local and state levels, ensuring accuracy at each point before moving forward to the next step. The verification process begins with unopened ballot return envelopes, carefully prepared for scanning, and then scanned to ensure the returned ballot belongs to the current election in Benton County. An initial count of the ballots is established, and signatures are captured by the automated signature verification system. Each signature is then reviewed by trained staff using a thorough review process to check for validity and ensure that only those with a signature that matches the voter's signature on file move forward to be counted. In the opening rooms, the count of ballots that have been accepted is verified at the next step by a bipartisan team running envelope-opening equipment prior to being moved forward to the multi-partisan election boards. The election boards carefully open and remove the ballots to ensure the privacy of each voter's ballot, then review each ballot as a decision-making board, preserving voter intent under observer and camera surveillance. The red marks and white correction tape are used to enhance the ballot to ensure the vote tabulation machine reads what the voter had marked. This is done when the voter used a pencil, made stray marks on the ballot, or did not completely fill the oval. Each ballot stack is reviewed to ensure no voice is left unheard before proceeding to the vote tabulation array. Here, a board consisting of the county clerk and members of different party affiliations oversee the process. Ballots are run through the secured vote tabulation machine, where the tracked ballot counts are reviewed and verified. If the machine has trouble reading a ballot, it sorts the ballot to a separate bin from those counted, and the board works to preserve the voter's intent for the machine to count. Running totals of votes are uploaded to encrypted thumb drives, ensuring the security of the data. Each portal is locked, and the equipment is password-protected. The encrypted devices are used to transfer election returns to a secured standalone computer that's not capable of connecting to the internet for further processing and preparation of the returns for the state and county websites. Once the election returns have been verified for accuracy, they are ready to be released to the public. The data is then transferred to an internet-connected computer where it can be uploaded to the state's database, where the statewide results are recorded. The county clerk also ensures election returns are available to the public on the county's website. In Benton County, every vote truly counts, and our commitment to transparency and accuracy ensures that democracy thrives. Thank you for joining us on this journey through our electoral process. To learn more about voting in Oregon, you can visit the Benton County Elections and the Oregon Secretary of State websites, where you will find comprehensive information about voter registration, upcoming elections, voting procedures, guides, frequently asked questions, and forms related to voting.
I'd like to say thank you for allowing this video to take place. We've seen a couple other videos throughout the state, and this one by far is very professional and shows transparency, which is what we really want to get out there. So it makes me very proud to be part of Benton County. So, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Just to reiterate, you know, it was really professionally done, non-intrusive, our processes. We received assistance from the PIO team and the videographic team throughout. There are some ideas that we have on how we plan to utilize the video. We want to use it to supplement our observer training as an educational resource to combat misinformation and disinformation, which can be prevalent at times, as a testament to Benton County's transparency. We want to use links to the video in emails, social media posts, on our website, any way we can get it out there, voter's pamphlet, whatever it takes. So we also want to make sure we have that readily available, of course, with a button on our election quick links webpage. We've got some ideas on naming the video, maybe run a few of those by you, conducting accurate and secure elections, transparent and secure election procedures, voting and ballot handling insights. So we're kind of trying to come to a finalization on what we want to call it. We also plan on sharing the video with party leadership, candidates and voters, as well as other Oregon election officials to get feedback and also to help them to explain their processes, which are usually quite similar to what we do, to their voters, might be helpful. And I just want to give special thanks to Rachel for the idea and funding to begin with, and Corey for securing the professional videography team and for working with us, as well as John Avi and the video team for helping us develop the script to begin with, and just doing such a professional job throughout, and in recognizing the entire election team just for their participation and helping us make it as possible. Thanks to everyone. I hope you enjoyed it.
Thank you. I kind of like the "Voting in Elections" title. Something simple that's not too dry-sounding. Want people to watch it. Did, so this mostly was filmed during the primary election, correct?
It was done entirely throughout the primary election.
And how did your volunteers react to the process of being videoed?
Everyone was real receptive. It was great. Yeah, they were real non-intrusive. They did things quickly. Everything was scripted. It was just so impressive. I've not worked with such a well-organized team of videographers before.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I might mention, it's probably worth mentioning, the plan was to shoot it during the primary so we could do a strategic awareness and outreach campaign ahead of November.
Yes. Yeah, the video is great. You guys are like famous movie stars now. I'm gonna need your autograph. No, but it was a great job. I mean, there's so much information to pack into five minutes, man. I got to tour the Elections Department in 2022, and I was there for, what, an hour trying to soak in all of this same information? And it was not during an election cycle, by the way, when I toured, but anyway, it's great. Who did the voiceover? Was that like a professional person, or?
That's actually our videographer, and he has experience narrating as well.
Nice. Okay. I like it.
Then we wrote the script for it. I assisted with that, and then everybody put the finishing touches on it.
Very good. And then how do you, how do you get a computer that can't connect to the internet? Like, oh, now it's on.
Yeah, that was actually quite a process. I worked with Election System and Software to ensure that the laptop was what they call a hardened laptop, which means that it can't connect to the internet in any way. So, yeah, we paid extra.
I was just gonna say, do you have to pay extra for less of a feature? That's funny.
Yeah. Paid extra for them to break it.
Awesome. Well, you guys are great. Thank you.
I just want to make another comment. James was the one who said, "we need to do this during the primary" because there are, just because of the activity that's going there. And I think it really highlights the amazing And I think it really highlights the amazing people who work with you as well, that they were really excited about this. And I hope that you can take this product to the clerks conference. I think it's a document that I think every county should have, as well as it just unfortunately, we're going to be going into a kind of a crazy season, and we want to assure that to all people that their vote is secure. And I think you guys really did an amazing job of walking it painfully, slowly, working through it. And I believe our videographer is also a Benton County resident as well, so.
Yes, the videographer's name is Ashley Terry. He actually works for KORC Radio as well.
So, you know, we source locally. So thank you. Very strong work.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our consent calendar, which is a really full one today.
Yes, and before we approve stuff, I did have some questions about the liquor licenses. Okay, and I do see, yes, Dawn is there. Perfect. Hi, Dawn.
Hello.
So a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
So I saw for Deb's Cafe, there's like a stamp on it that says server education expired. Is that meaningful? Can you speak to that?
Actually, that piece of it is not our part of it. That's when it goes to OLCC. And so they check all of the licenses and make sure those are current. So for us, the role is just simply approving them, making sure the zoning is okay, and doing current background checks on them.
Okay, so the OLCC is the entity that deals with the expired license or whatever you would call it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then just another question. A couple of them are on different forms, I think like Garland and John Boys. And so they don't have like a designee, and they don't have insurance listed. Is it just because they're applying for a different type of license?
Yes, it could be. So there's another piece to this that we have a form that they fill out for the background check that has some of more of those details. But because this is public record and it has things like social security numbers on it, I'm unable to give that to you guys through the public process for folks to see, so.
Okay, but everybody has their proper insurance and all that, even if it's not listed on some of those forms?
Correct. Actually, that's OLCC's responsibility to make sure that that is all correct before they approve the license.
Okay, and then just a process question. So we do our part. Which comes first? Do we send this to OLCC, or have they seen it first and sent it to us?
So these are all actually renewals. So what happens is that they fill out our form, they fill out the renewal, and ours is actually due before. So the process that this is currently right now is if there's somebody that the county cannot, and that's by statute that we're not approving. But then it all goes to OLCC, and then they have the final piece of it, so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And I guess I just want to add, Dawn mentioned something that's important. We don't have any approval authority. I want to say, what, Dawn, maybe 10, 12 years ago, the law changed. Benton County used to get applications where we would make recommendations to OLCC on these applications. The law changed, and all counties, cities, now your hands are tied. It's OLCC makes.
But they still have to come to us?
Yes.
That's odd. Okay.
We need to know where they are and who they are for law enforcement purposes, if nothing else.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, things change. I want to just briefly enumerate what's in the consent calendar this time because it's quite loaded. It includes the county role in the renewal of annual liquor licenses, approval of March 19 mating minutes, and a variety of appointments to our advisory boards and committees. That's quite a long list. And then an authorization for application for Oregon State Parks Local Government Grant or McBee Campground Improvements. I do want to point out that with respect to our advisory boards and committees, we have one that does not get many applicants, and we definitely need a couple more people, and that's the Property Value Appeals Board. So if numbers are your thing, and if you're interested in assessment and taxation, please look to our website for a role on that committee. It only convenes once a year, or one season a year, I should say, and maybe multiple days. With that, I'm ready for a motion.
Sure, I think it's worth highlighting also that in with the board and committee appointments, we are making our official appointments to the disposal site advisory committee, which I know has been long awaited by many community members. And we had over 20 applications, and it was a really tough choice because everybody was just very qualified. So hard choice, but that serves us well, so.
Thank you for highlighting that element.
Yes, so with that, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We will move on into new business. And the first item is regarding annual contract with Lynn County for youth detention beds with Matt Witherell.
Right up in your face. Morning Commissioners. What I'm here to talk to you about today is the intergovernmental agreement between Lynn and Benton County regarding the Lynn Benton Detention Center. This is an annual contract. It comes every year, and it's been in place since the late 1990s, when the facility was originally built. So detention is our last option for youth, as I've explained in the past. And placing youth in detention is not something that we take very lightly, and it is the most expensive option and intervention that we have. However, we must access it from time to time. I was not able to capture our daily usage rate at this time, but currently, we don't have any youth in detention. So that's a, that's a plus. There are a few that were released last week. The Lynn County Director, Tori Lynn and myself, work very closely together, finding cost savings around detention. What our contract pays for are four beds located in the facility. It is a 20-bed facility. It maintains 10% of the director's salary and 10% of the office manager's salary. The total operating budget for the 2425 fiscal year in Lynn County is $2,421,262. 10% of the director's salary and the office manager's salary comes to $21,470 for a total operating cost of $2,446,446. Total contracted amount for this fiscal year is $446,776. It's an increase of $1,121 over the last contract. With that, so there's a longstanding administrative fee that is pulled out of that. There's a detention budget. They had a savings of $148,000 due to staffing changes. We're getting a 20% credit back for that. And then approximately $58,000 in detention bed revenue from outside contracts. So if we take that away, because there's a meal credit in there as well, $2,266. The revenue from outside contracts of $58,000, and the unspent detention budget of $148,000, the adjusted cost comes to $2,233,881, and our cost for that is $446,776. What are the breakdown of $111,694 and a daily bed cost of $306 per day? So as I said, Tori and I work pretty close together to try to get these costs lowered for our respective organizations. And I asked that we sign this agreement and send it back over to Lynn County. I will stand for any questions.
I would like to just know for my own reference, is this daily bed cost of $306 per day comparable to that for other detention centers around the state?
It is. It's actually a little bit lower than Marion County or Donnelly Long or Deschutes County. So yes, it's a little, it's a little bit lower.
And I also know that the detention facilities for the state are overseen by the state. And is it Lynn County that takes the lead whenever there's any kind of an audit or review of those policies and procedures?
Yes, currently with the Youth Development Oregon, we are going through an audit process. We actually went through and wrote detention guidelines in 2018, 2019, and the books were published in February of 2020. And I think the books are still sitting at Youth Development Oregon because we went into lockdown shortly after that. But right now, they are in the process of going through those, looking at 30-day programs and so on and so forth.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Weiss? Okay, well, we'll entertain a motion.
I'm scrolling for the motion unless you have, do you know the page number? My computer just went to sleep. Okay, let's see. I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Lynn and Benton County to house youth at the Lynn Benton Detention Center.
Second, all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the last of our new business is a modified proposal for health services structure with Rick Crager, Assistant County Administrator, April Holland, Health Services, and Lacey Moll, the Director of Community Health Centers. And I don't have to say interim anymore. Almost, not quite?
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for having us here this morning. And I'm going to be referring to page 236 through 238 of your agenda. I guess first, before I do get started, and as Commissioner Ogierro alluded to, I am pleased to announce that last night at the Community Health Center Board, they did make an approval to direct appoint Lacey Moll as the new Executive Director for the Community Health Centers. I will say, as she pointed to, that still has to go through final processing from the county. So she's actually got to accept. So, so there's, there's some paperwork. So to give me a little bit of time to complete that process, the board was kind enough to make that effective 7-1 of 2024. But I think really congratulations, well deserved. And I couldn't be more ecstatic about this and the opportunity. And that kind of links to the conversation here today, a bit of a segue. So again, referring to page 236 of the memo that I provided to you. First, I provided a little bit of background of a decision that was made last May, May 5th, to be exact, by the Board of Commissioners, and it was in relation to, at the time, the Health Department and the Community Health Centers. And the idea, and a good one, I want to point out, the idea of bringing those two departments together into what I call one super department. And as always, I want to emphasize super because the Health Departments, you'd see, represent essentially 50% of the employees here in the county. So that would have been one very, very large department. And it would have been entitled the Department of Health and Human Services under, again, one director, and moving everybody else to a division. That's in its essence. And again, that's referenced on page 236 of the approval. Again, great idea, certainly support. And as outlined in the memo, there were key goals that was established in that recommendation, leading systems improvements to create those efficiencies, a focus on a more improved and integrated service and coordination of services, providing a greater level of subject matter expertise than a county administrator is likely to process. And again, just as a reminder, in the past, the county administrator has been the direct supervisor for all of the department heads, all 15 of them, or 14, I should say, across the county. And so again, that creates a lot of work for, for an accounting ministry, and I'll get to that here shortly. Obviously, the other, other pieces of supporting and coaching division leaders and creating a work environment. Again, all goals that we continue to support around this. But you know, that was a year ago, and a lot has changed, as we alluded in the memo. First and foremost, since that time, we've gone through two interim direct, two interim county administrators, including myself, and then, of course, our permanent county administrator. Rachel was assigned in in October, of course, as a new person. She wanted to have the opportunity to at least establish a review and what worked best for her management team. In addition, what is also new is at the time, there wasn't any, and at the time of this approval, there was not an assistant county administrator that was approved by you all in the budget process. So that gave an opportunity to also consider how does that roll into the structure? In March, I was appointed as that Assistant County Administrator. And I think one of the things, and Rachel can vouch for this, is that it was very important for me in this role, in this leadership role, is to be a support to the health services component. Again, just because I think it's a huge part of what we do, it's a huge responsibility. And certainly, I will be the first to say, I'm not a health expert. These two can certainly vouch for that. But I think we all collectively agree that it is a, you know, a leadership position that is necessary to kind of really help us bring our service together. These two fine ladies are great experts in their fields and will continue to do so. But there's also an opportunity to really continue to meet the vision that was put forward last May and look at those coordination services. It doesn't necessarily require yet another position. And so part of what we see as an opportunity with, with my new position is to maybe reconsider that. So one of my first tasks that Rachel was very clear with me on was to look at this. We've been in an interim state. April, to my left, has actually been in an interim role since last, in February of 2023. Of course, Lacey, for at least another week and a half, is in an interim role for the, since last August. That's not easy. That's not easy, and it doesn't really enable us to be able to effectively move forward. So clearly, Rachel was clear with me, and I agreed that we needed to get this moving forward. Part of it is, we needed to take the time to really think about that this was a very good proposal. We really needed to sit down and analyze it carefully. So that's what we've been doing for the last two and three months. Again, lots of credit to both of April and Lacey on this. And I think, you know, there's, there's still a lot of, you know, work that needs to move forward. But what we would like to propose is, again, consideration of the changes that have occurred, is, is consider revising that recommendation and moving us and continuing a structure of two departments, as we've had with the Health Department and with the Community Health Center. But with understanding that as the Assistant County Administrator, those are two departments under my, I guess, direct supervisory component. And I would obviously still be expected to play a role of bringing not only those two together, but all of our departments as we look at more of a cohesive approach in our services. There's a few things that, as I outlined here in the recommendation, along with that, that we both feel, or all three of us feel, that is very important. Back to the coordination of services, we'd like to suggest that you assign us a task of completing a strategic health services plan. Because part of this, again, is how do we work our services together? Both of these two have been a model of working together since they've taken their interim roles, and that I have, I'll ask, I believe will continue to happen. But how do we make sure we continue to push that down? I always hesitate, of course, when you use the word strategic plan. You think, okay, great, yeah, one more thing to put on a shelf. But I see this as more of a strategic action plan. I think there's so many opportunities for us. I'm learning more every day as I sit with them and get involved in these various different types of initiatives. There are a lot of opportunities out there. And I think we, we would like to suggest that the Board of Commissioners task us with providing a health service strategic plan. There's also a variety of other structural things that, as we say, the devil's in the detail, but there's more structural things that need to be considered. And I'd like to put a date on us of October 31st on that, just to give us time to complete that. We've already been working on it, but you also need to be able to work with our staff. We socialize that more and be able to get feedback and suggestions. But just to kind of illustrate for you some of the key pieces of that, one of them is what first and foremost is our health business office. Often in the world of finance, we all call it Fund 515, which is essentially the cost center specific to this. But this is kind of the health business office. And I don't want to confuse this with the financial services component because we've talked about how that, we've worked towards integrating health services more into financial. This is really, I like to say, our billing and coding team, our data quality folks, our reporting, our systems, our compliance. There's great people, a great group of. our compliance, there's great people, a great group of folks, but it is sort of, there's a lot of subsets of it, and I think we believe that there is a real opportunity to look at that carefully, we are looking and bringing in an assessment in relation to that whole area. We've already made some changes in relation to the billing piece under Lacey's leadership, but we also need to make sure how does that Health Business Office help the entire continuum, as opposed to one or the other? Because I think oftentimes I just thought, well, it's just CHCs, well, no, this is a continuum across the board, so we think that's a big component of this. The next really big piece is Behavioral Health, which is becoming a huge division within this. Again, we're trying to be thoughtful about what the best structures are to put in place. I know there's been lots of conversations as a division, as a department. I think looking at a lot of the models that we've seen, I think that there's a great opportunity to better integrate that into our department structures and still maintain that, that continuum of services, but we also have to realize there's a huge responsibility. As early as that, we're also going to be bringing a crisis center on, which is going to be another large amount of staffing, so how do we effectively manage that? We think that's a big, big piece of work that we have here over the summer and moving towards the end of October. There's also a lot of areas, and I'm not going to name all of them, both Lacey and April, I'm sure could speak more if you, if you like, but areas where we think that there could be, you know, maybe some duplication, maybe some opportunities. I know going through the budget process myself, I've seen it's like, okay, well, it's in the Community Health Center, but it's managed by the Health Department. And it's, so there, we tried to clean up some of that stuff, but there's still some existing areas. And we need to set both our department heads up for success and make sure there's real clarity around that and that there is no duplication. So again, we see some opportunities there. I, I want to mention, review the management span of control, it's not talked about enough, but we've seen some cases where we have managers managing 19, 20 people. And, and again, I know that there are certain positions that can't do that, where you have maybe more repetitive type professional responsibilities, but I, I think that's a real area that we need to be thoughtful about. Particularly, I've seen it in Behavioral Health, where we've had a lot of just questionable management, you know, span of control, the programs, the services that they operate, so I think that's another area. And then lastly, and this is something that both Lacey and April have already jumped in, we have to really look seriously at our classifications in relation to to the entire health services and making sure that we have consistency. But we're also running into situations, as, as you all know very well, that we have compression issues at times. We have trouble in terms of retaining and hiring employees, so we're going to have to really be able to look at all of that. Both of them have dove into the, the classification system, and we'll be working with HR very, very closely to make sure that we're adhering to that work, but also being able to put out clearly, here are some maybe challenges and, and needs we have. So that's a lot of work, I know, but it's important work. I think, again, I'm delighted about the, at least one of the dominoes last night to, to be able to start moving in place and like to really get this going, because I think there's some really great things that we can do. So with that, Commissioners, that's my recommendation, I would invite both either April or Lacey to add anything they feel like I might have missed.
You did such a great job of, of really articulating the experience we've had, but I really want to thank Rachel and all of you for the support in, in directing Rick to provide us support. He's been a great partner, thought partner, and champion, and encourager and accountability partner through this process, and we feel really good about this recommendation, we feel really heard through the process, so we just, I want to thank you all for that.
What more can I add? I mean, we are, we are truly, we are truly in this together as Health Services, and it's been the, the goal of Lacey and I when, since we started working together to achieve that regardless of what the structure needed to look like. So I'm really excited and super grateful for all of the support. I think that we have an opportunity to have not only our staff feel like they, they belong and, but also really enhance our service delivery to our community. And, you know, as a, as someone with a background in public health, I'm always, you know, thinking about, as you are too, Lacey, about reducing barriers, improving access and improving health outcomes. And with people and service at the front of mind, we, we can, we can do a lot of great work together, so really looking forward to it.
Thank you. I know that the solution of creating a Health and Human Services Department was one that we didn't take lightly, and it was partly in reaction and response to many years of challenge with the lack of clarity in the roles between Public Health and the Community Health Centers. And I think that I want to compliment you all as a team for building the trust with one another and really digging deep into your respective programs and service delivery and thinking about outcomes first and not about your structure and what's mine, you know? That makes a big difference, and I think if we can get to that next level of having a common strategic vision and clarity about some of the duplicative roles and programs and lines of authority, that will make a huge difference, and I'm, I feel comfortable with this approach. So, thank you. I do want to ask with respect to our role as the Board of Health and the local mental health authority and the local public health authority, will this plan address those kind of mandated elements of needing to have plans for, for those elements?
Absolutely, yeah, we're considering both, all the advisory as well as Board of Health functions in, in the, the structure as we're continuing the exploration.
So at some point, we should probably convene as the Board of Health and review whatever you come up with.
Commissioner Ogierro, I may, again, just add that, I think that's part of why, you know, we see this kind of a couple of phases here, right? And, and we want to make sure we're doing everything right, we're not saying we have all the answers right this moment, but we want to make sure, but as we go forward, we put any kind of structures, we recognize exactly what you're talking about, and we're considering all these things. So there will be lots of conversations being had with Damian in Behavioral Health, as well as in Public Health, and making sure all those appropriate and required roles are filled, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, yeah, I, I know that Behavioral Health Plan is one of those that we also need to have. And so I'm glad you called out the Behavioral Health Division and those span of control issues, they're, they're real. Commissioner Wise?
Thank you, I just wanted to say thank you for all the thought and work that went into this, and the staff reported here is great, thank you. And I think it's really, it's a, it's a sign of good leadership to pause and consider where you're at and reevaluate your goals and your plan as you learn more, rather than blindly just pushing ahead because, so, thank you for bringing this back to us, and I support it.
I have one question for County Council, in terms of the meeting motion, it seems very broad and general. Should we perhaps make it a little bit more specific to approving the change to our May 2023 proposed health services structure to shifting to the recommendation contained in the memo dated June 7th?
If, if that, if you want to be more specific and you want to reference that memo, that's probably a good amendment.
I would recommend that we do that.
I was thinking the same thing, so moved.
Okay. Hopefully Erica captured that, and I will second the motion, all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, and congratulations, team.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Yes, congratulations, Lacey, if I would have known, I would have brought my bubble machine, so.
Yeah, well, we have to, we have more to do, exactly. Are there any announcements? Okay, hearing none, is there any other business before the board? Hearing none, we will adjourn our board meeting and go into our special district meetings. Let's take a, yes, let's take a five minute break, and we will be back with our special districts.
Move to approve resolution number R 2024-010, adopting a budget, making appropriations, and levying taxes at 0.08 per 1,000 of assessed value for the Benton County Agricultural Extension Services County Service District for fiscal year 2024 through 2025, which begins on July 1st, 2024.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other business before the district? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 10:27. Depending on which clock you look at, 10:25, just realizing that we're off a couple of minutes. Okay, we will now open Alpine County Service District Governing Board meeting for Tuesday, June 18th. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will invite staff to present the budget.
The Alpine Service District budget is also an annual budget that was approved by the Budget Committee on May 6th, 2024. This budget assumes no increase in rates, however, there is a new customer, which actually increases the revenue, so what the increase in revenue isn't due to rate increase, but there is one new customer out there. The total appropriation being requested is 75,950 in the categories of materials and services for 36,974, capital outlay for 10,000. This is intended to be for a depth survey of the lagoons. This is intended to be for a depth survey of the lagoons and contingency for $28,976. And there is no tax levy for this service district.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding the budget for the Alpine County Service District? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And are there any questions? I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number R 2024-011, adopting a budget and making appropriations for the Alpine County Service District for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, which begins July 1st, 2024.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. Is there any other business before the Alpine County Service District? Hearing none, we are adjourned at 10:27. Unlike the previous 10:27, which was 10:25. Moving on to the Alcee County Service District. Oops, I seem to have lost my place here. Okay, the Alcee County Service District, are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we have a consent calendar to approve, containing the January 2nd, 24 minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, all in favor, please indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Okay, the calendar is approved. We will move on into the public hearing and begin with a presentation from staff.
The Alcee County Service District is an annual budget. This was approved by the Budget Committee also on May 6, 2024. Again, no increase in rates for this year. The appropriation request is $272,777 in materials and services for $67,176, capital outlay for $30,000. That category has been increased from the prior year. What we've found is that we have had to do supplementals on a regular basis to move out of contingency for unforeseen issues that come up. So we've just put that into the budget this year instead. And then the contingency will be $175,601. This budget has four cost centers, two for the operations and two for the construction. And there is no tax levy for this district either.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding the budget for the Alcee County Service District? Hearing none, close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number R 2024-012, adopting a budget and making appropriations for the Alcee County Service District for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, which begins July 1st, 2024.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. Is there any other business before the Alcee County Service District? Hearing none, it will adjourn the meeting at 10:29 a.m. Next, I will open the Alcee Human Services County Service District Governing Board Meeting at 10:30 a.m. And we will begin with comments from the public. Are there any comments? Hearing none, we will move into our public hearing, beginning with the staff report regarding the adoption of the 202425 budget.
The Alcee Human Services County Service District is an annual budget that was approved by a Budget Committee on May 6. The committee elected to not levy a tax this year. And so the only thing in the budget is a minimal amount for materials and services along with the contingency. And that will be funded through the fund balance carryout.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll turn now to anyone wishing to testify on the Alcee Human Services County Service District budget. Hearing no interest in testifying, I'll close the public hearing and I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number R 2024-013, adopting a budget and making appropriations for the Alcee Human Services County Service District for fiscal year 2024 through 2025, which begins July 1st, 2024.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. Is there any other business before the Alcee Human Services County Service District? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 10:31 a.m. Cascade View County Service District Governing Board Meeting is now open at 10:31 a.m. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move into our public hearing, beginning with the staff report regarding the 202425 budget.
The Cascade View Service County Service District is an annual budget approved by the Budget Committee on May 29. We had some scheduling issues, but got them all together. The budget assumes no increase in rates. The total appropriation requested is $201,857, with materials and services being $34,335, $25,000 for capital outlay. The original purpose for that increase was to purchase a new pump. However, we did a supplemental in this current year, but decided to maintain that capital outlay level just to have the authority for unforeseen issues. And then the contingency of $142,522, and there's no tax levy for this district.
Are there any questions? Okay, is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding the budget for the Cascade View County Service District? Hearing no interest, I will close the public hearing and I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number R 2024-014, adopting a budget and making appropriations for the Cascade View County Service District for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, which begins July 1st, 2024.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Is there any other business before the Cascade View County Service District? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 10:33 a.m. Moving on, we will now open the Hidden Valley County Service District Governing Board Meeting at 10:33 a.m. And are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing and ask staff to please present the budget.
The Hidden Valley County Service District is an annual budget approved by the Budget Committee on May 6, 2024. This budget was built on the assumption of a $10 per month per household rate increase. The last increase was in the fiscal year 2018, 2019. The total appropriation being requested is $45,619, made up of materials and services of $13,855, capital outlay of $2,000 and contingency of $29,764. This district does have the ability to levy a tax, but has elected not to.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding the budget for the Hidden Valley County Service District? Hearing no interest, I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number R 2024-015, adopting a budget and making appropriations for the Hidden Valley County Service District for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, which begins July 1st, 2024.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you very much. Is there any other business before Hidden Valley? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:35. Moving to the South Third County Service District Governing Board, open that meeting at 10:35 a.m. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing and begin with the staff report regarding the 2425 budget.
The South Third County Service District is an annual budget approved by the Budget Committee on May 6, 2024. This budget was built on the assumption of a $5 per month increase per connection. This cost is really driven by the city of Corvallis itself on their rates. So while the last increase was in 2023, we needed to increase the rates based on their increase. The total appropriation is $29,412, which is just in materials and services to the city. And there is no tax levy on this district.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding the 2425 budget? Hearing no interest, I'll close the public hearing and move on to a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number R 2024-016, adopting a budget and making appropriations for the South Third County Service District for the fiscal year 2024 and 2025, which begins July 1st, 2024.
Second, all in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. Is there any other business before South Third County Service District? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned at 10:37 a.m. And that does it.
Hey, and I just wanted to say thank you.